My name is Scott Lawrenson. I'm the head custodian at St. Anthony's School in King Carden for the Bruce Gray Catholic District School Board. I've been a custodian for 13 years, but I've been head custodian for two years now. Yeah, normally I'd come in in the morning, open all the school up, unlock the doors, make sure the heat and all that is good. The computer program is for our heating system, so it basically gives you the whole floor plan of the school, so you can monitor the school or make adjustments for every room. We do the alarm checks for the intrusion and fire system. We do playground inspections every morning. Make sure like the playground equipment's in good order and nothing's loose or falling apart, looking for anything out of the ordinary, whether it be like sharp objects, or garbage, or sticks. It covers the whole playground, like the whole grounds, not just the playground when we do that. When the kids are at recess, I will lunch recess and usually first recess because they'll eat snack before and lunch before recess. I'll go around and wipe all their tabletops, collect garbage at lunchtime, so that it's nice and clean when they come back in. Recently, we've switched all our products to green products, so it's a lot more safe for the people using it and anyone who comes in contact with it. Generally, as a custodian, you're all around the whole building, so you pick up on things that other people may not, I guess. Personally, I take a sense of pride in having a nice, clean school for everybody to enjoy and learn in. We're here all the time, the kids do look up to you and tend to trust you. A lot of the time, it's generally just like a hello in the hall, or they might say hi to me, or ask them how they're doing today, tell you how their day is for no real reason. And I generally listen to them because they like to talk to me, so I make them as comfortable as possible when they're here.
Hi, John, how are you? What's up, honey? I'm good, how are you doing? I'm the first person parents and students usually meet, so I'm kind of the welcome to the school. How are you? My name's Maureen Douglas, and I'm a school secretary, and I work at St. Francis de Sales School in Smith Falls. It's part of the Catholic District School Board of Eastern Ontario. We usually begin the day by checking messages, checking emails, checking who's going to be away, who may be in, greeting supply teachers. Oh, there she is!
I was just talking to Jess.
Okay, we were just saying, the only one's not here. Then we get into entering attendances, phoning home to verify, we have to verify every student that's away. Okay, well, tell her to bring pictures tomorrow. It's probably one of the most important parts of our job, to make sure kids are arrived safely, that parents know, because it has happened, that I will phone a parent at work and say, you know, little Johnny's not at school today, and they don't know. You know, the child could have slept in, whatever, but parents need to know their child is safe.
Because I walk to school every day, and it takes me time to see at school.
Do you want me to give you a piece of ice to kind of press on it? Sometimes that'll help. I give out mitts and hats when it's cold. I do head lice checks, which is probably the worst part of my job, but I do. I give out medication. Like, we have some students who have peanut allergies, you know, they're diabetics. Like, you pretty much need to know the health of every child, because we are the constant. I don't think the public knows what goes on in the school anymore. You know, the demands every day that we have. A lot more has landed on the secretary's plate. Like, I think because a lot has now gone online, like, things that maybe different individuals were able to do, it's all kind of gone online, and who better to do it online? Is the school secretary. People seem to convene there, you know? It's probably the hub of the school, so people stop in to check, get messages, give messages. It is the hub of the school.
My name is Katie Elliott. I am a transcriber EA at Algonquin Public School in Woodstock. I was doing a placement actually here at Algonquin, and I had a supervisor. She suggested that I get into the field, because I have a sibling who has a visual impairment, and I just looked into the program, and I actually became an orientation and mobility instructor before I was a transcriber. So Tabitha is the one that usually sets out what it is that the kids are learning, and Leslie Johnson, who is a vision resource teacher, does a lot more, the teaching of the Braille, and my time is usually supporting them by making the material. So if they're going to be reading a book, I will take the book, I will put it into our computer, so I can Braille it all out, and then I'll make the tactile pictures. So I'm a little bit more on the hands-on getting the physical things ready. We have a copy that we have in a big binder for Livy, and each page is a different letter. And on that page, we have got an enlarged picture, we've got it all tactile, so that she can actually feel the picture, and then we've got the words in large print and Braille, so that she is able to follow in whatever medium that she wants to try and follow. What we tried to do with the center that she was at, which was all learning the sounds and getting the sounds and figuring out how to discern the different animals by listening to the sounds of the letters, we took two pictures and we actually put it on the iPad, so that we could blow it up, we could be right there, and she could actually see them easier, because the cards themselves were not accessible.
Monsters!
And especially to start with a student who is so young, as Livy, in JK and SK. I'm going to enjoy, I think, watching her grow and learn, and all the different things that we get to do, because being a transcriber is not just about producing the Braille and doing that, it's about looking at the child as a whole and figuring out what we need. Because of her vision and the fact that she doesn't have a lot of usable vision, we will be, you know, we'll have to talk about social cues and facial expressions, and we have to do a lot more of that teaching that somebody with vision can just take for granted, and see every day. She can't see those things. So it's not just the Braille thing, it's kind of life, it's teaching life. So I'm going to see if we can get that fixed for you today, okay?
My name is Diane Leptin, and I am an itinerant educational assistant for assistive technology with the Trillium Lakelands District School Board. I service all the schools in the Muskoka region.
All right. So did you post it yet? You gotta click the little envelopes. Ta-da!
Assistive technology is, it could be many things, but in my aspect of assistive technology, it's like iPads, iPods, and computer software that assists the students to access the curriculum in the classroom.
So you need to open Soul Surfer again, Andrew.
The student is usually referred by an occupational therapist, or has a psychoed assessment done, and after that process is complete, and it's deemed essential to have technology, it could be for audio processing issues, it could be for fine motor, unable to use paper pen. Some of the students that I work with have difficulty reading or reading comprehension, so what I'm going to be doing with them is showing them how to take a PDF, something that was scanned, like on a scanner or on a photocopier, and open it in a program called Worksheet Wizard.
So it's going to come up on his computer, did you want us?
And then show them how to use Worksheet Wizard to read the document to them, and show them how they can input their answers right onto that PDF.
Sick! Okay, so that's how you would get your worksheet onto your computer.
I try to have activities that are engaging and fun for them. Like, today, we're going to be looking at a PDF, which is a story about Bethany Hamilton's Soul Surfer. She was the young girl that lost her arm in a shark attack. You'll see a red box start to come, you want to make a box around the words. Time, and then click Read. And at the end, I have a little QR code that they can take their iPod or their iPad and scan it, and then they get to watch a little Bethany Hamilton interview.
Yeah, so you need to get the QR code where you can see it.
Some students don't want to use a computer, they don't want to look different, and they want to be like everybody else. And so we're trying to get that stigma taken away, and embrace the situation, and have them use these tools, and show them how this can help them and make life easier for them in school.
Is that it? Oh, oh, cool. It's your video.
I'm Kathleen Lue. I'm an educational assistant at St. Anthony's School in King Carden. I work in two different classrooms with students that are of high needs. I do work with a child that is on the autism spectrum, and assist him throughout the day to help him reach his goals and follow classroom procedure. If they are focused on a particular thing, if we can do any planning or any work around that particular interest, then we'll build on that to help them get through their day, and it makes their day more interesting. When they decide not to comply, you have to take a whole different view of it, and maybe taking a walk, getting him out of the room, that he can have conversation, and it brings him back to the classroom, allows him to focus a little better, and attempt that way to get him to work. Back to our room, are you going to go do some, stamp some words? We fall under the direction of the classroom teacher. We bounce a lot off of each other and share. She's always open to trying whatever we come up with to see if it works, and if it works, we use it and expand on it. Helping them set goals and meet their goals, being there when they achieve them, it's very rewarding. You do build a rapport with the kids, and when we're not always assigned to them the next year, which in some cases is good, because you don't want them to be, you know, dependent on one particular EA. But yes, I find it very difficult when they hit grade eight and leave, especially when you've followed them up through the years. To see these young people grow up and move on to the next phase in their life, it's heartwarming.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so this one's called "Not Hurting Our Friends' Feelings and Thinking About Other People's Feelings," and sometimes we do it without even realizing that we do it. Have you ever had someone say, "Stop doing that," and you didn't realize that you were doing it? Yeah.
My name's Cheryl Burton, I'm a student support worker, and I work for the Catholic District School Board of Eastern Ontario.
Can you think of a time that someone has said something to you?
Some of the programs I do speak specifically to teaching children emotional literacy, so that when you're talking to people and you're seeing situations, that you can read them well and understand them, so that you don't have miscommunications, you don't develop crises, you don't always roll into problems.
Is this a big rip in the back of your shirt, or is that just a big old stain?
Part of the lesson planning is trying to work him through that if you start to look at people and listen to people, that you can hear different things of what they're saying. It's how we say it, and the reason we're saying it. If we're saying it to be friendly, then that, we can show that, and if we're saying it to be mean, we're also going to show that as well, right?
I'm a bucket filler.
I'm a bucket filler.
Each and every day.
Each and every day.
Kind things I do.
Kind things I do.
The concept is that everyone has an invisible bucket, and that bucket is to fill all the good things, your thoughts, and anything about love and kindness that makes you feel good.
What kind of things would go in here? We've talked about them a little bit on the announcements, we did a game about them. Not fighting, being kind to one another, what else?
They have power in their words, in their actions, and simple little things can touch other people.
Hooray for you and me!
Hooray for you and me!
Good job, have a seat for a minute.
Education is academic, of course, but it's kind of like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, how do you teach to someone who is not well-fed, or is under stress? I mean, those aren't the basic needs being met at that time, so it's one of those things where, once the basic needs are met and stability is in place, then maybe we can pursue higher learning. So that's kind of our role too, is to address that.
My name is Sheila Graham. I'm an itinerant educational assistant for behavior for Trillium Lakelands District School Board. I support almost 30 schools in the south part of Trillium Lakelands. I listen and then chat with the staff and brainstorm ideas. We talk about the scale of going from green to red, and having those meltdowns, where kids feel frustrated and upset, and they could be running away, they could be crying, screaming, yelling, swearing, hitting staff, spitting on staff, biting staff, and so we talk about coming up with some strategies that staff can use to be proactive, and then we also work with the students to help them recognize some of their triggers and their feelings before they get to that yellow zone, and then to a red zone. I am a trainer for behavior management systems, which focuses on the personal safety and develop strategies for the staff. Part of my job truly is being a sounding board for staff.
Sometimes when you're in the heat of it, it's a little hard to step back and think of different ways, sometimes you're just...
Deb has been the consistent person in that classroom, because there was being changes in staff, including the teacher, and the EAs support several times in this fall, so for her, I've been like her cheerleader, because she needed to know that, yeah, I can do this, I can keep holding it together, and because this little jelly bean that's in this classroom has been melting down a lot. Deb was asking about, well, they're still having trouble with transitions from, say, coming off the computer or leaving playtime.
That's going to be very good. I like this. Very good. Thanks for doing that.
Okay, and then I made a couple more things, because we talked about... When we need to build our toolbox, we need to have lots of strategies in there to pull out every day. It takes a long time to build up trust and relationships within schools, and having our team in particular, we've been able to carry over from year to year and follow our students, and see that growth, and build on those successes.
I'm Rob Sharp. I work at the Grand Dairy District School Board. I've been here for 23 years now. My position right now is an FMM. It's the building maintenance mechanic trade. It's a simple little job, but it's very important to a lot of the teachers to keep the classrooms quiet, and the washroom's working properly, and most of my job is keeping the lights lit, keeping the toilets working. I've got three trades, actually. I've got the carpenter's license, I've got a cabinet maker's license, and I've gone through the apprenticeship for an FMM. And the FMM is just generally how a building operates, all the heating and cooling, and electrical, and plumbing. I just found out yesterday that the main entrance door isn't working properly, it's not latching, closed, and they're having a harder time opening it. Safety is just, well, on any job, they say it's number one, and really, the way they treat us here, safety is number one, and we get a lot of training, we get a lot of electrical training, we get a lot of asbestos training. So this ladder could hardly come down at all, but if it ever falls off the hook that's up there, we'll have the safety chain on it. So there we go, a nice, safe ladder. It is important that the board's got tradespeople on staff, because when emergencies come up, and they sure do, we can respond. Usually it's 30 minutes or something like that for any type of emergency, and you've got the tradespeople right there, ready to do the work, and equipped with the tools to do it, and knowledge, and they're familiar with the buildings. When you hire a contractor and they're not familiar with the buildings, or out of valley heights, how to get here, so we can do things much quicker. There's a lot of information that comes over the computer, and me being so far away from the bosses, I've got all my work orders right here. I'll just go down to my first class, I open up my first class, and then from first class, I go into our eBase, which is our work order system, and it just works, it just works so smoothly. A lot of people, whether it's the public, or the teachers, or the principal, they really don't see what we do, and as long as everything's running smoothly, we've done our job. So the principal doesn't need to know anything, the public, they come in and the building's warm and it's clean, we've done our job.
My name's Sandy Mina. I work for the Grand Dairy District School Board, and my position is licensed plumber. Again, a sense of accomplishment that, okay, the students, the staff have their working bathrooms, have their water where needed, whether it be a cooking class, phys ed class, where they're able to shower after, it's just, I know the importance of each and every school and each and every plumbing-related issue related to each and every school. I am ready to answer my phone 24/7, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, in relation to any of the schools within the Grand Dairy District School Board. Port Rowan Public School, I will be installing what they call a water bottle fill station. It is a drinking fountain combination bottle filling station. It's where the students can take their refillable water bottle that they brought from home and refill it. There's a digital readout on these bottle filling stations where it shows you how many bottles of water have been filled by these, and within a three-month span, in the high schools, the number will read 14,000 to 15,000. I've installed about 35 of these, so that's a lot of water bottles that aren't in our landfills, and the kids just love them. They line up to these things, which I think is great, instead of bringing pop and whatever I love being a plumber, and I like the satisfaction that I can make sure these students, while they're expanding their minds, have the facilities to use, and it's operating properly.
I'm Ruth McDonald. This is Sacred Heart High School in Waukerton, Ontario, Bruce Gray Catholic District School I'm secretary in the main office, I'm the attendance secretary. I do other duties too, but that's the main focus of my duties, is attendance. Basically, what I do now is make sure that the teachers have entered their attendance. I enter all of the phone calls, and emails, and everything that we get from the parents, explaining that your children are going to be away, or why they were away previously. I do all the reports that need to be done at the end of the day, and, you know, I give out late slips, admit slips, sign-ins, whatever the kids need, yeah. Connie is responsible for a lot of things, like enrollment, and she also is involved with the supply teachers. She prepares all of the paperwork and everything for the supply teachers. And then there's Diane. She looks after the financials, and she does all of the ordering. I always say the one consistent in the schools is usually the secretaries, because the principals come and go, the vice principals come and go, even the teachers, to a certain extent, come and go.
Hi.
Hi. I love my job. My favorite part of the job is the kids. I think they keep me feeling younger, dealing with them all the time. I've been, like I said, almost 26 years, and I still really like teenagers. You came to talk to me because you're bored?
Yeah, pretty much.
No class? When you have something to sell, or you're collecting money?
When I have something to sell, she always dotes.
I guess I better go back to work, okay?
Okay, I'll go back to being bored.
Okay. See ya.
My name is Mary Hills. I'm a Learning Commons Informationist with the Upper Canada District School Board. I am currently at Athens District High School, and three elementary schools. Mrs. Dillon's class, grade 12 history class. Mrs. Dillon had contacted me, and I said, Sharon, what will your class be working on today, and how can I help? Is there any research that you would like to have them look into? I can make a list. And then when I found out that the subject was not covered in the LibGuides and the Virtual Learning Commons, I took it upon myself to create that. The LibGuides are a page on this Virtual Learning Commons, where information is located, and has been created by a Learning Commons Informationist. And it can contain links, it has photographs, it also has basic tools that help the student. I like to think that that's one of my mottos, because that's what I'm here for. I'm here to help and assist in promoting literacy, but also to help with research. And if you can, even in a small way, help a student with something like that, then I feel that I've succeeded. The look on people's faces when you help them, and it's not like I do it for that reason, but it's such, it's so satisfying, because you've helped somebody. And I figure if I can help someone find something that they're looking for, and make it easier for them, or help them so they know how to do it in the future, that's the best.
You put the term in, you put a comma, add another term, add a date, add a country, another term that relates to what you're looking for. A lot of times, people don't realize how much is entailed with your work, and it's important for people to know that, especially when you're working in an educational institution. They need to know that your child, their educational needs are being taken care of, not only by the teachers, but by the support staff.
I'm Marcy Hall, and I'm in ECE, and I work here at Emily Stowe Public School, and it's in Thames Valley District School Board. FTK is an inquiry-based learning environment, so I will come in with a plan, and I would say... So I will come in with a plan and I would say 75% of the time, my plan changes. I'm working with Sandra Bell Cameron and this is actually her first year in FDK. She has been a reading recovery teacher and an LST and she's really enjoying the program. Sometimes she takes the lead, sometimes I take the lead and then the third person involved is the child.
What do you have though? Tell me about them.
Sometimes they take the lead. So as long as we know, we know what's in the curriculum, we know what needs to be covered and it seems any idea that comes up, we can go with.
With the pirate ship because we have a broken pulley. Noah informed me when I came back in that we have to fix the pulley. Be cool. Can you help? Of course you can help. All right.
Because it's not such a structured environment, we don't cut them off. We can let them explore what they enjoy and they're learning the literacy, the math, and it's a continuum. Every day, those kids are interacting with media where we've got the smart board, we have the technology. They're learning fast and furious.
Yes, it tells you north, south, west or east. All right, then tell me what else is on this map?
A pirate ship.
What's pirate ship for?
Our training, like our college, is based on child development. So we have two years of extensive child development. So we learn about the stages of development, social, emotional, cognitive development. We work on how to set up a room, rules and regulations, but it's all based around a certain age group. So zero to six is our focus for two years straight. One of the parents came in and said that her little fella said that all he does is play all day. And my coworker and I, we looked at each other and we said, "That is the best compliment we have ever got." Watching them grow is just amazing and watching them from day one in September, and we're in November now, how much they've already grown, how much they've already learned. It's phenomenal.
Something that has a pattern.
And it'll come out of that account.
Okay. And where could I access that form?
So all your forms are in Blackboard, under accounting. So we're good with this?
Yes.
Sort of have an idea?
My name is Angela Galliano. I am the Office Administrator at St. George Catholic School and that is within the Ottawa Catholic School Board.
You're so lucky.
I love doing the mentoring because I remember starting this job and feeling like I was alone on an island. I really did. Because you look at your staff and you have your teachers who at least have each other to, you know, if there's any questions or they all understand each other. Nobody understood my job. Nobody gives you a manual and says, "This is how things are done." It's sort of, you fall into it when you go to that school. We didn't know how it was gonna go with the board when they started this mentoring program because who wants to say, "Oh, I need help?" We did a two-day workshop on coaching for learners. We had a workshop on fierce conversations, you know, just if you're working with your colleague and, you know, something comes up, how to handle. We produced a manual, like a school manual for office administrators. You don't want to bother a person on a silly question, but that's a relationship that I do build with them and no questions ever silly and please give us a call and...
I'm Suzanne Pereira and I'm the Office Administrator at Holy Cross Elementary. When you first start, you're overwhelmed and I was overwhelmed. The mentoring program was about two months after that. I went to my principal and I said, "You know, I want to be competent at this position and in order to do so, I'm gonna need some support." And she was great. You know, she really directed me to the HR and then to leadership development and this is how I got the ball rolling. She was very, very welcoming over the phone and we set up an appointment to come to my school first and then to hers.
I have to account for those $1,000. So right now, I'm submitting, you know, $500 receipts. So I submit and then once my money dwindles, then she'll give me another $1,000.
That she's willing to do it is awesome. I'd love to reach the point of competency and confidence where I could actually return the favor and be a mentor, oh, big time.
My name is Judy Kirkwood and I work with the Trillium Lakelands District School Board. I am an outdoor education technician and I started in 1982.
Just walk slowly.
People assume that kids play outside and have all the skills, the outdoor skills, but very few people have ever been on cross-country skis or had a chance to canoe. So there's all sorts of life lessons that when they come up here that they try out for the first time.
Along underneath the bridge is totally over my head. So what you, I know. So what we want to do is you want to find out where your knees are and you don't want to go much higher than your knees because if you go in this area right here, look at, it starts to come in back here.
So the students had hip waders on and they were scooping for invertebrates and we're looking at the diversity in our wetland, trying to determine if our wetland is healthy and if we have lots of species of different insects, then that's one of the indicators. And we were able to find a couple of the indicators, so the side swimmer, which needs a lot of oxygen, so that helped the kids to determine that our wetland is full of oxygen, which is a great thing.
He's smaller. Well, no, it's totally different species.
We were able to take some of the specimens and bring them back, look under the microscope and they get to a clear view of some of the aspects of the insects.
And now, this is our yearly ponds and we are part of Axe Lake's wetland area. See all this dark, dark green? They're not trees. All this area that's dark, dark green is actually wetlands, lily pads, bull rushes, cattails.
It's really a snippet to help them appreciate the outdoors and we figure that if they appreciate the outdoors, then they're gonna take a keen interest in the outdoors and if they have a keen interest in the outdoors, then they're gonna be looking out for their environment. So it's a lifelong lessons that we're trying to give them.
But however, you know what? When you take that, you're learning and you're gonna take quite a bit with you and we'll just do exercises from a spelling book. That's right. We'll do some...
My name is Karen Tuchet. I'm a literacy instructor for the Upper Canada District School Board. It's a school for adults, alternative education. And the ALIP program, which is the Adult Literacy Employment Preparation, we help students get the skills they need to either go on to secondary or for employment or apprenticeship and for independence as well. I work out of two locations this year. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, I work here out of Westgate Court, which is a housing unit through Cornwall Housing. We're here because we're trying to get the population that live in the units, make it easier for them to come to school. From the students that we have here today, there are a number of them that are going over to credits. So their goal is to get their grade 12 diploma. I have one student now that's here for apprenticeship.
Okay, so two things. Today, you're gonna research the colleges and then maybe on Tuesday, we can get on to the apprenticeship. And we have two that are here for independence. Yeah, so where are you gonna go?
Right here? No.
Okay, you're gonna go here too?
What I'm trying to do is upgrade my reading skills and writing skills right now so I could run a computer. I'm really proud of myself. I'm gonna have to say that. I actually went on the internet and found out how to fix this tiller that I've been working on. I found out how to get the diagrams on the tiller. What an amazing feat for me to be able to do that was, you know, it was something else and I didn't have to ask my son or I actually was able, with the help from the teachers, which I thank very much.
When somebody says, "You know, my family's no longer on Ontario Works. I now have a full-time job and we will never go back to Ontario Works. I've broken that cycle in my family," so that's the reward. When students have come in or learners have come in and they said, "Look, I can't even help my kids with their homework." I get this mail, "I have no clue what I'm reading." So when they're with us for a while and then they come back and say, "You know what? I can help my children now. I understand what I'm reading." That's what's really, in the end, is what makes it worthwhile.